Friday, so I'm glad that it's beautiful day out there. I guess sort of where we're at is is put our path back to the normal operations and that 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 was a resident bottoms question this morning on the call. So as a county and us keeping operations going, I want you guys to think that as department heads and elected officials is how do how do we have some sort of normal that we're going forward? I don't know what that really is, but it's gonna be dependent upon department head selected officials, stay within the guidelines and everything, but we have to keep services the best we can for our citizens. So I just wanted to make that statement because it really clicked with me this morning when we were on a call. So I got Daniel for an update and then we'll go to Judy for an update. So take it away, Danny. And I'm sorry, I didn't ask if you had anything to add. I think, do we have Judy start with the updates?
All right, Judy, Judy is in there. So the hospital has started a all mask policy for everybody that's coming in. We are going to start, the hospital staff is going to start sewing in the hospital to make sure we have enough for our community and enough for the people who are coming in, because I know that's a need. The whole reason for doing that is to protect people from you if you cough, not from you to get it. So so the reason why we're wearing it is because people don't know they have it and you could be non-symptomatic for a couple of days when you could actually pass it off to people. And this is if you're coughing, sneezing, or talking, it could help prevent another person from getting it. So that's the whole reason behind it. We are, we are getting the new testing machine. You guys have heard about that. I don't know a ton about that right now. It was new news to me yesterday. I do know we get a very limited supply of test with the thought that there's no replacement test to be found at this time.
The actual test kits that go along with it?
Yeah. And I believe, I could be wrong, if you test positive, you actually have to use a couple of the test kits to make sure that that's accurate. So one person could use a couple, not just one. So that's kind of a bummer. What else we doing? There wasn't much this week. Oh, I have the test. We have forty, I think we're at forty-three. Forty-three. Did Ariana just send that out?
From yesterday, we were at forty-two.
Okay, so we have forty-five tests done, forty-four negative, and one pending today as of this time. And that's kind of my update today. Do you guys have any questions for me? Not much, kind of slow, which is good.
What is the like hospital admission stuff? Like is there, are there people admitted into the hospital using beds or anything with symptoms?
We are not taking anybody with symptoms unless they are critical that they need hospital care.
So we don't have anybody that's in critical condition?
Not that I'm aware of. But they tested negative. Yeah, I ordered some more supplies for you. And then I'm assuming is that, will that wrap you up with what you have?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
They've started the process.
Okay.
They took some time off because we had some other stuff.
Right.
And I'll be back at it on Monday.
Okay. So what I would like to see, to see moving forward, if you guys can, is when you're in group settings of more than one person to wear a mask, when you're by yourself in your office, you don't have to wear a mask. If you need a mask, let me know and we'll make sure we get them. We're trying to get all different sizes made up. If if you guys are okay with that, I think it's prudent to move forward with that at this time. If you find a cloth mask is hard, like this, somebody just made this when I was trying it on, and I like the masks that have a wire that you can pinch so that it stays. If you find that your face, you can't breathe in it, or your face, it doesn't fit you well, we could give you a surgical mask that you'll wear until it, you know, goes bad. So you don't have to wear a face, a cloth mask, we sure like everybody to wear as many as we can so that we could save the surgical masks for our emergency department. So if you have any questions, just let me know. I think that was it for me. Thank you.
I guess the big thing, we got the tent yesterday from the military. The other tent's kind of staying waiting. That was the big thing. The big thing we've been working on lately is the PPE. We got the majority of our order, four orders. Like they gave us excess love, but we were short a few, like sixty and ninety-fives, but we definitely do. They're talking about when this thing's gonna peak before anything can be published. Over the twenty-first of April, the eve of May, June, or July.
Yeah. Really hard, March tenth. It's really, really hard. Because if we're doing a really good job, you know, that gets taken, changes the whole, the whole timeline.
Yeah. I'm still, personally, I'm kind of still thinking in my head whether or not we actually have the powerful data that can prove that it's actually been social distancing alone that's actually prevented this, prevented that we're to the point where we have zero cases so far in Lake County and in other counties on the state. I'm, I mean, the social distancing has probably helped, but I'm not saying that it hasn't, but I'm still, I still feel like we haven't complete data.
Yeah. Well, part of the problem with that is it's really hard because we're not, we're purposely not testing people because we're holding our tests. So people who possibly have it, that are self-isolating, might have it, and we just don't know that. So I don't know that you're ever, you're not ever gonna have the data we want because we're purposely not testing the people who might have it that are well enough to not be hospitalized, if that makes any sort of sense. So we're sending, like Jill is sick. Jill is not feeling well. She went home yesterday. We're not gonna test her until she gets to a point if she is bad. She could have it. We don't know. She'll come back to work when it's time. So it's really hard to say we don't have it here just because we've touched it a handful of people.
And in fact, I actually do believe it likely is here already.
Yeah, yeah.
We just don't know it, but.
Yeah. We, it just hasn't, it hasn't made its way to somebody. If it's here, it hasn't been to somebody who is having a really hard time getting over it. So it's that elderly person that maybe, you know, that can't recover at home. So I don't know, you know. A lot of people want to see a positive to have black and white in front of you. I would be really happy to never see that and just say it came and went.
So if you're self-quarantine or if your physician tells you to quarantine, what is the trigger to come back to work out of quarantine? And how long do you think that they are a carrier once they?
They're done. So they say seventy-two hours after your last symptom without taking like Tylenol or Ibuprofen. So seventy-two hours without a fever, a really bad cough, a sore throat, if those were what you had. You can have GI things with it, so you can have diarrhea, vomiting, or seven days, whichever is the longest. So you're gonna be out at least seven days and longer depending on how fast your symptoms go away. You need to be seventy-two hours without symptoms.
And and so everything they've touched and everything within their house, their car and everything, seventy-two hours, that should be gone.
That's, that's the guidance that the doctors are giving out of the hospital. And then moving forward with wearing a mask in group settings unless you're by yourself.
So like what happens if there's a wall and like between me and Darlin', there's a wall? Is that a group setting or is that?
No, as long as you're not actually coughing or talking where it can, you know.
But we use like the same copier, use the same?
Yeah. No, just wash your hands.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. So moving forward as far as our operations and everything, I guess like every time I say this, I would like to hear back from the elected officials and department heads that you have what you need, what's the challenges. I was gonna have Jay in today, but he's tied up. Give an overview of what's allowed for leave and when you have to use your sick leave or when you have to use vacation time working remotely. If you're only working four hours remotely to get full pay, you have to use other type of leave to cover your full shift, that type of stuff. He wasn't able to be here, but I'm really interested in what you're not getting from the Board of Commissioners or direction or what is working, more so is what I'd like to hear about, is how, how it's working. By the time we get through this, it just keeps getting extended out further and further. Now we're talking into June. Our, our economy, our everything is going to tank. And so I don't know where it's gonna go for government entities in our operations. But whenever it starts going that far out, there's a lot of different impacts that we're going to have. I'm looking over at Jake from our June off side to our adult correction side. I mean, we're not able to get out there and do those services that, you know, we're gonna have to get, find some way to be proactive with the social distancing and try to get that segment of society back into some regulations and stuff. I appreciate the building department. They're, they're operating best they can with remote pitchers and all this stuff. Same with every other department, but I, I don't know if we're pushing out into June and what is, what are we gonna look like? And then if they're saying it's gonna come back in the fall, what are we gonna have? A month and a half of semi-normal? I mean, it's, we gotta get creative and try to figure out as a county government what we're gonna do. Just any thoughts on that from anybody or any new ideas or anything?
Well, from the assessor's office, with our new software, we got our appraisers out early this year. And unfortunately, they got a lot of work gathered before things went south. And we've got another thirty days worth of office work. So timing for us has been, actually, this is, hasn't hampered us. And so we're making plans that when we do burn out of this work, we'll be doing more drive-by. And then when we need to get more specific information, we're gonna be doing that by mail. Contacting people by phone is almost impossible, cell phone number acquiring, and we can't keep private information in public records. So that's gonna slow that down, but it'll still make it so we can continue working. In our office, we have just basically, I have one individual that's at a high-risk scenario, and they've quarantined themselves working from home. And everybody else has been isolated to their own workspace. So we have really good social distancing in our office and things are going well. And ownerships are changing. We're working with title companies and with via emails, phone calls, and so on. So it's business as usual in our office. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not ideal, but it's working.
So I, I would think in your world, which comes into all of our world, is that this, when we see taxation coming in November, we're gonna probably see people not able to pay a lot of their taxes, which in turn is, so it hits us in the budget side.
So Ann and I just ran some numbers this morning. And normally, at this time going into budget season, we're at ninety-three percent collected. And as of today, we're at ninety-one point five eight. So that's down just a touch. We've had a lot of people trying to contact us to make payments or get information and I'm, and bottom line is, we're just having them mail it in. A lot of people don't care to do our present online visa thing because of fees and the third-party provider scenario we got, but it, you know. So we're seeing, this is the first year in several years, we've, we've been below ninety-three percent at this point in the game.
Well, and come November, I think that, that's what I'm thinking about whenever November comes to pay the taxes and the AICL C.
For, for the twenty, twenty-one season.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, this is a ripple effect that's gonna affect everybody.
To add to that, we heard the state come out with a direction on gas tax and vehicle registration money that they're saying predicted twenty-five percent decline next year. I think anybody that sees state support or taxation to fund your budgets, we need to be conservative right now. Don't wait, be conservative right now.
Well, we heard Senator Finley this morning on the call, there was two billion dollars in the state budget that they sort of buffered. That's gone, puts another billion, which is a swing of three billion dollars to the state. And so that's just the first month into this. So if your department depends on state revenues, we're gonna have a challenge to, to fight for that. Jake, one of the biggest things on the call this morning was for us to definitely push out there on the DOC budget, because it's been cut already. And then we need to push and say they need to keep it funded at the level. But, you know, we're, we're a month into it, basically, and these, you're talking twenty-five percent on gas registration tax. People's talking about DOC. There has been talk, they're talking about DOC, about releasing prisoners early if they have ninety days or less. The impact to our communities on that and our, our adult probation can't even do the probation work that's necessary for those releases. And so that's what I'm giving to watch out for our next path, but how do we make this semi-normal or how do we get wrapped to it? Go ahead, Jake.
So just a couple of things. DOC was asked to take twenty-five percent cut recently. Community corrections has held harmless in that. But moving forward, the governor did ask Department of Corrections to make a, generate a list of people that they could release if they needed to, and it was those folks that are high-risk inside the institutions. The folks that are older, older inmates that are eligible eight weeks out. And then there's seven different buckets that they've created, no measure eleven and no pre-measure eleven cases. What that means to Lake County is potentially, if they get through the third bucket, we'll have three people released, potentially early, three people that are originally from here. So.
So the highest risk, the highest problem people will come back into our community, is what you're saying?
No highest risk for the coronavirus infection. Although, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of like sending all the college kids home right now.
Yeah. So I sent mine back.
So the one thing you said is what I, I've dealt with back in two thousand and three, I think, is the state comes in, asks for the twenty-five percent reduction, and they ask for another one, and then they zero out the state budget sometime. And, and that's scary for the carryover dollars that you have in your department that were trying to just keep things operating. And so I don't mean to talk doom and gloom, but this, this is going to get real, real for us in government because we operate from fees and taxation. And most of us think a fee is just another form of taxation. Well, because I'm full of all this happy news, Ronnie, I'm looking at you. You, you, you had sent out to the OFA on fairs. There's a lot of talk out there about fairs and whether they're gonna go on or not.
Yeah, there was a conference call yesterday morning, and there was about fifty-two people, I think, on it. A lot of the fairs were on it and a lot of the carnival guys were on it. And basically, fairgrounds are basically shut down through May is kind of the general consensus in that area. We only have one thing scheduled in June. We've already canceled everything for May, so. But two of the things that were really interesting, one was that this year, state dollars will, because they're already using budget, will probably get that fifty-three that we usually get. Next year, that could be cut in half, was one of the discussions they were having. The other thing that was pretty prominent was even the fairs that start in July, why that may happen, they're redoing how their fairs look because carnivals are usually booked out a year and a half ahead of time, and they can't make updates. They can't reschedule, they can't. So certain fairs will have, if they get to go, will have a totally different look, which will mean less revenue for them, et cetera. But it's been interesting. There was two main thoughts. One was, well, everybody's gonna wanna get out and go to fairs and be doing something after all the isolation. But the flip side of that is there, the majority of those people aren't working right now. So there's not gonna be a whole lot of money to get out there and enjoy all that stuff. So that was another thing that they've been working on, how to make a fair more affordable, cutting out the acts or whatever. But it was interesting.
Updates from any other departments or thoughts from other departments? Anything? Marla, you're on the phone from the DA's office. You got, have anything or any uniquenesses? You know, you have working with the court side of it and also with running your trials and stuff.
Well, at this point right now, between our office and the circuit court, we have changed both of our in-casities with our trial with, with Mr. Holland. And because he's in the high-risk category, those were given to new attorneys, and so we have new dates for all of those. So all of our ground dates that were coming up have been bumped out for a little bit. And at this point, we've been very cautious that we haven't had to hold the grand jury in our small room there. And between Gina and I, the circuit court, we're working hard with Josh to get that figured out so that if we do need to do a grand jury, we will do it in the, in the courtroom at this point. But right now, everything is going very well between office delivery and shutdown.
So how, how many do you have when you have a grand jury? What is there, there ten or?
There, well, when you have a grand jury, you have seven jurors, and then you would have the DA, and then you would have one witness at a time. So in that small grand jury room, it does not work out where, where everyone is. And at this point, it's very hard for us because with the new law that started in July, we have to record all the grand jury proceedings that go to our server of the county so that we can go in and discover it to the defense attorney. So that's why it's normally would be just move it to a bigger room and we're good, but we have to make sure all of our recording stuff is in place for us to be able to redo it and get it discovered.
So when you run grand jury, I would assume it's the same, we would need somebody at the door to be able to screen and allow people into only one part of the courthouse? Is that what you envision?
Yeah. So basically, what's happened before we have this shut down, because we run jury to eight o'clock in the morning, I usually sit down there at the door. I go in pretty early on for grand jury days, and then I'm the one that lets them in the door because the door is usually unlocked at like anyhow on a normal business day. So I would probably be the one that would be, you know, doing that as they come in and then they would go straight up to the courthouse room, do our whatever sessions we have, and then straight back out.
All right.
And Marla, Marla, this is Amy. There should be no issue with doing that in the courtroom. Because we have the same S T R and everything, we can save it and then send it to you to download it to your system. There would be absolutely no issue with doing it, and then social distancing wouldn't be an issue in that space.
So Amy, so I think maybe on Monday that we need to be together with Josh because Gina and I, me and I, if we go, he says, but it has to be our system, not the grand jury room. Not, we cannot even live in the courtroom. He is telling us that this, this is not hooked up right to do that.
So isn't that super easy? We could just take that equipment and put it in the courtroom. We, we won't have any problem recording this, the exact same system.
So that's.
One save to the county, one save to the state, not a big deal at all.
So that's why we're getting a longer court. We're in, in, right now, we're getting a longer court to get our system into the courtroom.
Yeah, but it should, I mean, it should go really smooth. It shouldn't be a big deal at all.
Yep, it won't be, and I, no, I don't, I'm not saying there's an issue. I'm just saying that we, you know, we don't have the corporate sensitivity thing.
All right. Ronnie, you guys, you guys to make that work.
Yeah.
Any, any, is there anybody, is undersheriff Paul along? Or the sheriff?
I am. I am on Brad.
Can you give us some updates on the, from the, your, your side of the world right now, Paul?
Yeah, so we're seeing that the, the community as a whole is somewhat staying in their residences. I mean, we are having people still seek essential services, but as far as people congregating, we're not seeing issues with that. We've had quite low law enforcement interactions compared to what normal is. So what it appears is, is even the folks that we normally come in contact with are also following the social isolation. The jails have kind of stepped up their precautions. So all the staff are wearing masks. All the staff are being screened, including taking a temperature and logging that daily. We still, I believe we've only had two arrests that were attempted to be lodged since this started. And unless it's a serious offense or it's a person crime, we're, we're trying to utilize site release option. We have had two that came in, one the court released, and then the other one posted bail. So we've had a very low turnover in our jail. And currently, all the inmates are healthy. They are, however, filing motions with the court for release due to the social distancing not, not being able to be maintained. Police today's legal counsel has advised that social distancing doesn't apply in a corrections facility because that is essentially their residence, and so it will be no different than your family, social distancing in your own home. And so we're, we're just being really careful with the inmates at the jail and try not to have an exposure. We're being careful when it comes to the employees of not bringing it into the jail. And we have one cell that we've dedicated to when we have an arrest that's mandatory, we can quarantine that person for seven to fourteen days, whatever the, the recommendation is, to try to avoid any kind of a, a spread of, of an inside of facility.
Thank you. Any, any questions of Paul? Appreciate the update, Paul. Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
Have we overlooked anybody that wants to give an update or ask questions?
Can I say some good news?
Absolutely. Always.
I know, awesome. So Swinerton donated a sixty-one inch, zero-turn Husqvarna lawnmower to the fairgrounds.
I know, it's awesome.
And it's a, yeah, it's a commercial.
Sixty-one inches, almost the, the speed.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, yeah, I'm so excited. So we took pictures when we unloaded it and all kinds of stuff, and so we're gonna put an article in the paper. So awesome, I, it was, it kinda came out of the blue, we had talked about it last year, them wanting to do something. And then I had, they had wanted to just donate and I went, you know, this is what we really need. And so we kinda went through it and their PR department is awesome. And then all of a sudden I got an email saying the Husqvarna was due to be shipped. So I could barely talk, it was fun.
Well, well, that 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 is good news, that's associated with the solar, that's what it's bringing down, with the contractor doing the work and giving to our community. Thank you for the work on that.
Hey Judy, is it the same amount of time, let's say you have a family member that's sick and but you don't, like, let's say my daughter gets sick.
Uh huh.
And then would it be the same amount of time that I'd have to wait to come back to work?
No, you don't have to wait to come back to work, you have to self-monitor, I would suggest wearing a mask. Otherwise, what we're gonna find is nobody's gonna be able to go anywhere. And especially for our healthcare and our and our essential workers, they're they're just having you self-monitor, make sure you're doing okay.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, on the lines of masks, I sent a message out to all employees that Candace and my kid have been working on masks. So today, I believe she's made over two hundred and thirty masks and given all those out. And she's got, I'm sure, at least close to another hundred already being requested, so she's she's busy at doing that. The main thing we're needing, I think, to continue to move forward would be more elastic.
Yeah.
That's something that's backwater, I think, until the sixteenth at least, and so.
So we're looking today and, cause that's, so there's two sides to that. Like this one, a sweet lady just made and brought into us and and I wanted to try it and it just doesn't work for me at all. Because you see I'm constantly, cause it's going down and moving. The ties we're finding are harder to make, the ties, because they take longer. But they're fitting everybody's faces better and that pulls this up and back and down. So I was anti-tie, but that seems to be okay if we don't get elastic. The other thing is, we just went to the store and bought some bungee cord. Apparently, if you cut open the bungee cord, it's all elastic inside of it. So Public Health is gonna try that today and see how that works and I'll let you know. And supplies, we're trying to get supplies at Public Health through the hospital. So she can call me and and I can help her with that as we get it too, we really appreciate it. Yesterday, when we were, I don't know, I think Daniel left, when we were at the hospital. It's really important to get enough masks to our hospital staff so that we don't go through our other masks. And in doing that, it's all the vendors, anybody who comes into the hospital, we're going to loan them a laundered mask, cloth mask. And then when they leave, when they take off their daily tag, they drop their mask also so we can keep those there. And and when we had that conversation, it just became really, really apparent that the, we've 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 had a few hundred donated to us too. That that's still not enough, because if you think every employee needs three with laundering. And then to get our community that we're asking to wear as they go out to start wearing them, we need quite a few more. And and that's where I ask for people who are having downtime at the hospital, they want them to try to still work. We're just gonna get big sewing crews up and going so that we can get this taken care of in a week and have as many as we possibly can have ready to go. Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Yeah. Would not fifth rubber bands work?
I think they really hurt your ears and I think they they break. But you know, we're using, the elastic works better because you can make it better. We're using your elastic, the the girl's hair ties. And those work if you have a mask that's big enough that the that the actual mask goes almost to your ears. Otherwise, it's, on me, and I think I have a larger face for a female, but it's pulling on your ear and within eight hours, that really hurts. The good thing is with our recommendations, a lot of us are in our rooms by ourselves. Anytime you're by yourself, take it off, you know, you don't have to wear it. But if you're in a setting that has two people that you're not far away, we're even saying if there's two people in a room, we're wearing them now. And so masks are tricky and and the nice thing is we have one pattern kind of that we recommended to go out. Because we can actually make a filter and put it in there. We're finding that with all the different brands that are people are making, it's actually working out a little better. Because this mask would fit Joe Harland really well, cause she has a small face. And obviously, it doesn't, it's not big enough to cover mine. So with all the different masks that are coming in, you'll have an opportunity for an employee to grab and latch onto the couple that really fit him well. And and just keep looking for different ones. We really do like the ones that have a little bit of something on the nose that you can pinch. Because that will keep it from moving on you when you're top, your chin automatically makes it pull down. So it's just a learning process. The other good thing I wanna say is I know that we're concerned about it coming back in the fall. What we really need to remember is by the time the wave goes through the first time, people are gonna get ill and they're gonna build up some immunity. And when it comes back a second time, hopefully, how it will work is we won't see the numbers that we see now. Because people, especially younger kids who have an immunity that they're building up, it it won't hopefully be so bad. And the other thing is there, we're getting time, but they're working hard on medicines that will help with this. So hopefully by the time, it's gonna be just like our flu. And it's gonna be something that we are educated, we know how to prevent it, we're getting immunization. They'll have some drugs that they can give out to help with the symptoms on people. And I know it seems really scary and overwhelming, but I think, just like with everything else, this was brand, brand new, nobody had an immunity. And that's why it's so, it's hitting us so hard. So the good and the bad is it'll make the way, people will have some immunity to it. And then the next time, it won't be hopefully so, so disastrous for us like it is now with everything we're doing.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions, thoughts?
We're gonna be, we're at a point in time now where we have to start some kind of drug testing on our clients. So we're gonna be using oral samples and it's nothing that we have to touch. They take it, put it in their mouth, tip turns blue, they drop it in the thing, we seal it up and mail it off. So we're gonna have folks coming in in waves, starting today, this afternoon, they're up north right now, collecting some from up north, we'll be back. One wave is eleven, the next wave is one, they're gonna be coming in our back door and we're gonna be screening them as they come in, using the screen sheet. We can also just give it to them outside, we're trying to, trying to be open-minded about the embarrassment for our clients. But reality is, we, they, people see us talking to them anyway, so they maybe just do it on their back step.
So so Jake, would it be necessary or available to get some kind of tent to do that outside?
We could do it right there, but we're gonna have a mask on, Zach and Billy are right now have masks in our glove zones and we, when we do that. So we can do it outside, but it's just depending on who the client is.
Do you have enough hand sanitizer? Do you, do you have enough hand sanitizer?
We got, we got gallons of that stuff.
Perfect, okay.
And it's nothing we have to touch, there's no swapping of anything, they literally take care of it, drop it in the solution. But we're about fine where we have to.
That's getting back to how do we operate the best normal way we can, so, yeah, you're adjusting to the time. So what happens when somebody tests positive, will refer them to the court, the court decides how they wanna move forward. Okay. Anything else?
We're getting a whole lot done out of the fairgrounds. How many has there been though? Like, so really, Nate, that's why we're doing countertops, painting, we're doing all kinds of stuff that normally we don't have time to do. So in that respect, you know, Nick works alone, so he just works.
Well, I appreciate your comment so much because I wasn't quite politically correct on the phone yesterday about the Forest Service. And I, I, I really believe right now is an opportunity to get things done, whether it's our federal agencies or others. It's just maybe not the norm, but you do have opportunity now with that the public. That you can be creative and get some things done, so thank you for that, that it goes right into where, I don't see Commissioner Albertson laughing. It goes right in the direction of my frustration with some agencies, it's just shutting everything down completely and then not doing any work at all, so.
I do have a question, have we heard, I haven't been on a call with any, like, I haven't heard from BLM or the Forest Service, what, how it's looking for their seasonal workers?
They're still planning on doing.
Are they still planning on having people, that's great. I just think of all of our kids that come home to work in the summer, it would be really nice if they get to do that.
Trying to postpone the fire, like the coal burns and stuff, back when everybody inhales the smoke, but.
Right.
They're still planning on doing all that.
So they have ideas, they're headed.
They're, they're having the same problem though, you know, trying to keep their crews apart. And then getting out to where they're working, you know. Everybody's gotta change things up.
Right.
Well, if they shut down all the recreation like they did with recreational, college kids will not have a job. So I, I guess they're politically correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm kinda going back to what Judy raised, but more about firefighting crews. Have you heard anything from the National Forest or BLM, how they're going to do firefighting crews for, like, let's say, not for a controlled burn, but let's say if they're, you know, a wildfire?
An actual event wildfire, there's, there's still rationale to the best they can for that, is what we heard yesterday on the call. They have no choice but to do that through, yeah, try to adhere to the social distancing the best they can.
Yeah, when you have a fire and it's wildfire, it's kind of all hands on deck. Those, those things kinda take priority and stuff, do what they can, but as far as social distancing and stuff, but we got a fire, we gotta put it out, so.
So we sort of heard two different things yesterday on the prescribed burning, it said that some people are shutting that part down. And then we heard that they were, they were still going to do that at a certain level. So I, Mark or James, we talked with Barry, I have not here, I don't know what their absolute plan is. You know, that if they don't do the prescribed burning and everything, that has potential impact for catastrophic fires because you don't have the fire breaks. And I, I guess, or making a good point, maybe we oughta have a call in there, an update from.
Might be a good idea.
The federal side of BLM.
Or some of our friends on that side, so I think it'd be prudent to reach out and find out.
May, maybe next Friday, they could, by phone, give us an update.
One of the challenges they mentioned to me was with the hiring stuff with their bunkhouse issue.
Oh yeah, we talked about this a little bit the other day.
Yeah.
Their plans have been changing daily too, I don't think they.
One of another normal recreation, Anna Redmond Wright had twenty-five contacts out there yesterday.
We didn't.
Right.
Twenty-five contacts?
Just that enough.
Were they all in one spot?
It was all in one spot.
Well, Anna's big, I mean, I was there, I was there yesterday and all the contacts were at least, you know. I did not see twenty-five people there and they were all well apart and away from each other. So as long as people are practicing social distancing, I, I mean, I don't really care.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if, I think if they start kicking people off the lakes, we're gonna have.
We're gonna have a uproar.
I say go fish and go hike.
Absolutely.
I mean, practice social distancing, but really, I mean, there's not too many good places to practice that.
It's our public land.
So, so.
You're gonna be fired up everywhere.
So at our programs and at our park that we manage day without design, practice social distancing and self-sanitize. Our remoteness, we're not gonna have water and sanitization there, but we, we as a board, that was the direction that we wanted to go. Keep those, keep those operating practices. Way I look at it, if you can practice social distancing and go the safe way, you damn sure should definitely go long. That is my opinion, so.
That's why I think our programs are all, all county programs are open.
Yes.
Yeah.
And and if we, if we've seen that people are congregating and everything, I think we would ask for a little stricter guidelines, maybe enforced on social distancing. But still keep remote. Now, you you get over to the website for, for there's combat fishing during salmon season and they're side by side, that, that's a little bit different than what we have out here in wide open spaces. And I'd get right back to twenty-five contacts, all that twenty-five, how many were local?
You did not give me that.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
Well, I was down there yesterday and I was local, so, but none of the other people I saw were aside from our road.
And that's generally what I'm seeing, I'm seeing eighty non-local to twenty local, seven lies. And I've seen people from Vegas, New Mexico, live on there, check people.
Order them.
I digress. Any, any other thoughts or comments? Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Yes, yes, we will adjourn at twenty, or fifty minutes to ten.